It's 7:00. It is October 2nd. And the meeting of the State and City Council is now in session. Okay. Let's have a flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ah, thank you. Thank you all for being here. We have two folks missing tonight. A resignation on the part of Ms. Nigle.
Nigle.
And Joe is sick, so those of us that are the bare minimum are here. Uh, let's see. Are there any additions to the agenda? Any declarations of ex parte contact, conflicts of interest, bias? Not hearing. Presentation comments from the public. The rare intern Isaac Courtneed is not here this evening. Billy, you have, you're on the agenda, so we'll wait for that. Consent agenda.
I know we said the consent agenda is written.
Second.
A motion in second to accept the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing done over the third, a motion passed. The first order of business tonight has been moved right along. No public hearings, unfinished business. Second consideration of an ordinance regarding vacation of an alleyway. Mr. Fleishman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The issue before you tonight is the second consideration of ordinance number 1,009. At your last meeting, the first consideration was approved by a majority of the council, but it was not unanimous, and therefore, the charter requires that it return to you at a second meeting, so it is presented to you. You held a hearing on this back in early August. The ordinance as drafted vacates only the northerly 150 feet of the alley because we never got the consent from one of the property owners. So even though the ordinance is entitled, an ordinance vacating an alleyway, it is actually vacating only a portion of the alleyway. Three-quarters of the alley will be vacated should the ordinance be adopted.
And your recommendation was to approve-
And the staff recommendation is to approve it. The recommendation from the planning commission was to enact the ordinance.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, folks, you've heard that, and actually, you saw it at September 18th meeting, apparently. So what would you like to do? Move, we accept the staff report as written. Okay. Dan, do I need to clarify for that?
Now, the motion should be to enact the ordinance.
Yeah. To enact the ordinance as a staff report. Okay. Approve second consideration of ordinance 10-09. So moved. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second then to approve the second consideration of ordinance 10-09. It is in consideration regarding vacation of an alleyway. Is there any discussion? If not, Alyssa, would you-
Mr. Mayor.
Whoops.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, please.
So, what happens if it's not unanimous again? Does it come back, or does it just go through once it's, yeah? Okay.
I think it's just noted as, as whatever it is.
Okay.
One to two, or no yeses and three noes, and it wasn't unanimous. Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Gladwell?
Right.
No. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Motion passes two to one.
Okay. Thank you. And new business, a State and Family Memorial Pool update. Staff report an update. Ms. Marr. And she has her staffed, whom I just met. Has her staff director with her tonight.
Introduce Katie Coyle. She is our pool staff supervisor. I thought I would make her come and hang out tonight, in case there is a time I can't make it, she can go for it. And so if we want to look at what we have made in the last couple months, if in July we ended up with 16, 93601, August was 10, 94485. Obviously, August were closed a little bit between it and September. I did pull our membership. So as of right now, we have 166 residents of Stateon that are members, 129 non-residents, and 48 silver and fit. It's a insurance-based pay. So we have a total of 343 people, registered members, that are paying right now for the pool. And with the shutting down of Curves, we keep getting new members, I'd say, pretty much daily, especially at Havering Silver and Fit, and I'm working on trying to get AARP. So, and that helps out our seniors in our community, pay for them to come in. And our class sizes, again, are staying pretty good-sized. Our swim lessons are almost completely maxed out. We only have, for our three-to-five-year-olds, we have 40 spots between mornings and evenings, and we only, we have 35 kids signed up. And the only openings we have are just a few at the upper swim level, so like our Ray Starfish, which are the ones that are swimming on their own pretty well. And then our six-years and up, we have 36 spots, because they're 40-minute classes, so they're longer. We have 32 kids signed up, so again, not very many left open, and that's assuming that we don't fill them tomorrow where we start swim lessons. We also have Salem Child Development Center that will start tomorrow. They will bring in 73 kids a week, and it'll, should end up bringing in $237.25 per week for us, for income. And then obviously, we have the swim team going that pays us to be there now. But overall, I think we're doing really good. I think the staff's happy. They like not having to deal with sports and after-school care and stuff, so I think things are going pretty well for the transition. Do you guys have any questions?
Go ahead, Brian.
Billy, the 48 silver and fit?
Yes.
Do you have that broken down by resident versus non-resident?
I don't. The way it is in the computer system, there's no way to earmark just what it is exactly. I can look at each individual one and find out for sure which, how many that is.
Just be curious.
Yeah. And then I know Saniam Hospital, again, has been pushing people our direction.
Yes.
Other questions? Thoughts?
What are monthly expenses, Billy?
Um, we are still working on all that.
What was the question again? I'm sure it's monthly expenses.
What are monthly expenses?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have the year-to-date.
Huh?
You have that report.
That's a good one. So Bonnie, what's the trend?
Let me ask one. Because this one looks different than what I'm used to reading.
All right, Katie. What's the trend for the pool? Hi, Mark Cronquist, counselor.
Hi. What's the trend for the pool? You mean, like, what's the most popular?
No, in terms of transition in ownership, if you will, of responsibility. How's it going?
Um, I think it's going very well. I think the team is, has managed that, you know, as a, as a group, very well, you know, especially with how young all of the guards are, you know, on average. So to have such a huge administrative transition where they're relearning new programs and, you know, relearning how to, you know, kind of work in a slightly different environment, they've done a great job, and a lot of them, we've seen them step up, and it's, you know, provided a lot of leadership opportunities for some of the kids in our community. And I think it's been, had a very positive impact on our lifeguards, as well as, you know, our patrons.
Well-stated. Thank you.
So as of right now, so our payroll part of it, we're at $36,000,1993. And then on our material and services, and that's with the new programs and the switchover and everything out, we're at $30,755,12, which making us in the whole, a little over $18,000 as of the last three months. But that's with all the buying the programs and setting everything up and having to basically start from scratch, which was exactly what we had to do with all this.
And I would just offer caution, a lot of that is just one-time upfront expenses that were put as part of the budget and that we expect to make up over time. So it's a little hard right now to say what the expenses are when we're looking at those trends, but-
Okay. All right. Other questions? Go ahead.
I just have a statement that Billy was recognized as one of our local heroes.
Yes, that was fun.
At the-
Volcanoes.
At a volcanoes game this, that was this last month.
Yes. Yeah, no, that was, that was really fun. Actually, it was really cool because I was with another dispatcher that I had dispatched with at Saniam, and then three officers that were at Stateon, one being Michael Beach, and that I had worked with here. And so we all kind of hang out and chatted for a while about things, so, and kind of caught up. But no, it was really fun. Thank you, by the way, for doing that. Any other questions?
Thank you, Billy. Appreciate it.
Oh, no. Thank you, guys. Trust me, everybody is very happy right now.
Okay.
All right. You guys have a good night.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Let's see. What's next? Staff commission reports. Cindy and Elizabeth, and you've got the numbers there, and I'm just incredibly happy with this report. Do you know why?
Because in July there were zero landlords.
They didn't send in delinquent notices to landlords, so I'm-
Yeah, but in August there were 77.
I'm incredibly happy, at least once, which is good. Thoughts on anything on that report?
I just had a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Keith, on the auto pay, is that just because people moved away, or the drop on the, for the difference in four? Is that, people dropped off, or is that just enrollment on the next month?
It's, it's probably enrollment on the next month.
Okay.
And some of that's been some of the transition from the old system to the new system. And I know people are still working on moving over to that.
Okay.
That's, that's pretty good. Keith, was there a target on, on trying to encourage people to get on that auto pay?
Uh, yes, we would very much like to see people on the auto pay, and it is being encouraged. I know our front office staff is, when people are coming in for payments, or calling in for payments, or trying to get them onto that new system.
Okay.
I think the new system is, it has some definite benefits over the old system, and the more people can get on the auto pay, the better for everybody. It's just one less thing that our customers have to worry about.
But the staff is trying to sell that on a daily basis, I'm sure. Okay. Uh, thank you. Other questions on that? If not, Chief Stevens, police report?
Mayor, council, you have before you the statistical report. It's for the month of August. The numbers are in line. Since we're talking about the month of August, I've previously spoken what went on there last month, and that was the eclipse and then the national night out, both of which we had talked in a previously meeting about. But as far as this month, in September, obviously, school started, but what I do want to mention is that we do have a new school resource officer that's assigned from the, to be the liaison from the police department to the schools, and that's going very well. That's Officer Dean Butler. He has a very good rapport with the teachers and with the students. He has an expertise in school safety and, and working with the staff, the school staff, on, on setting up safe procedures and things like that, so.
Mr. Mayor. Chief, the ordinance complaints went from 190 and 54 to 451 and 98. The staff report-
Yes, the, the increase in those-
That's a dramatic jump.
Yes, and that's because we, we took on the, we increased the role of the ordinance officer, is where that's from. We added the other halftime position. Both of them are up and, up and trained and fully, fully working, and they're very, both very active. You've met Alan, Alan Pinto, you've probably met before, and Claudia Camacho is, is our other one, and she's one of, actually, one of our reserve, our cadet officers as well. So both are very active.
Is the young lady, is she the one that runs around in the small pickup?
They both do.
In the same one?
Yes. Alan, Alan works on Mondays and Tuesdays, and Claudia works on Fridays and Saturdays.
Okay. Okay. I just wondered who, I would have seen, if I'd seen Alan in it, I'd have known what was going on.
Yeah.
But I saw her, and hm.
Okay. During the summer, you may have seen him in one of the other vehicles, our unmarked vehicles, for a while, because that pickup does not have air conditioning in it, so we did not make them suffer by, with the vehicle without air conditioning.
Thank you. Thank you for that. All right. Anything else, chief? Oh, area of interest. What was going on in Mill City yesterday?
In Mill City? I'm not sure what was happening there.
That is state, state, we call the riot squad.
SWAT?
SWAT. Out surrounding this house and every-
I'm not, I'm not aware of what was going on in Mill City.
It's ways away. I understand that. Okay. Uh, let's see. Mr. Ludwig.
I have, I have a question for the chief.
Oh, well, go ahead.
Since it's, since we're kind of low tonight, and doesn't look like we have a lot of stuff. I got a call while I was in, out of state, because the person was sure I knew everything about the city. I assured them I did not know everything about the city. I had a call from a local tavern owner that said that they were upset that they had to pay $25 to serve alcohol at a church event. And wanted to know what that was about, and I told them I had no idea what that was about. And, and since it, they're a relatively new establishment, I, I said, you know, I have no idea what it's about, you know, perhaps they have to run a check on you, or something to that effect that costs that many. I mean, I, but I really don't know. You probably should ask them. And they said, well, that couldn't be possible, because we just recently got our license, so obviously, they wouldn't have to run a check on us. But I said that I would ask you what it was about, but I also referred them back to you. So, but what, what-
It's, what that is, is that's actually an OLCC temporary site license, and they have, they currently have an onsite license, is what they're licensed to sell liquor for. If you take your, and sell your, your alcohol off-site, then you have to have an off-site license. If they wanted to, and I explained this to them, is that they could go to OLCC and they could request and, and get a license to sell off, off-premises as well, like what other caterers do. But since they did not have that, they're required by state law to have that, and that's actually an OLCC license, attempt to get a temporary license.
And did you tell them that the first time, or?
Yes.
You-
Two, basically, wolf kings?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, what were you doing telling them?
Drinking a cider. They were complaining to me as well.
I, I explained that to them.
And again, I probably wouldn't be asking you, Mark. I would be asking the policeman, and I probably also will not be telling them. I will refer them to you.
Yes. I, I explained them to, that to them, and it actually was not a $25 fee. It's a $15 fee. It's a, there's a $35 charge and less for anybody else. So if you or anybody else wanted to go and get a temporary license to sell at an event, you can do that, and that's a $35 charge. But if you are already an established business with a, with a licensed facility, then it's $15. And what that fee does is, is we, we do a quick check on who the server's going to be, as well as to do a, they, they draw up plans of what their plans are and what their security requirements are, and it's for us to check that, to make sure that's all within standards.
Okay. So are you getting the money, or is OLCC getting the money?
Uh, the city gets that money.
But OLCC takes, Clemson?
Yes.
Priscilla, well, I meant the winemaker. OLCC takes the money, but then sends it to the city. It's in an OLCC-
No, they, they pay, they pay the city directly.
Yeah.
So, Priscilla, that was in nature of a complaint about excessive fees, or just a comment on serving-
It was a complaint about excessive fees. And actually, it was a kind of pre-d quote, I had asked them to do something, and they, and this, then I get a call two weeks later saying, "This has nothing to do with what you ask us to do, but this, why is the city wanting money from us?" And again, I did not answer their question. Probably wouldn't have answered it if I had even thought I knew the answer.
Yes.
I would have referred them to you.
There was, there's two members there, and the, the message I got was that same concern, and when I called them back, I talked to the other member, the other owner, who was not available, and that one was very acceptable and very understanding of, of what it was and why we were doing, doing what we were doing, and they didn't have any issues with it at all.
Okay.
When I explained it, so.
Okay.
Okay. Got that? Uh, Mr. Ludwig.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Before you tonight, you have the Public Works Monthly Operating Report for August. In reviewing these numbers, they look very consistent with previous months, and so I have nothing further to add to these, but if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those. Mr. Mayor, sir.
If possible, we could start at least thinking about a, some kind of dedication for a doggy park?
I have-
And I don't have a timeline, I mean, just whatever we can do.
Well, I've reached out to my Parks Board to try to organize something. I have not gotten any kind of response from them. I have reached out to other members of the community to step up and try to coordinate that effort, or at least assist in that coordination, and I have gotten zero response. I reached out to our good vets that donated money to see if they perhaps wanted to have some sort of free shots or something. I don't know what the programs they have.
Right.
Did not get a response from them. Reached out to Marion County Dog Patrol, whatever they want to call themselves. They have a program that does that, but I was told that it takes quite some time to organize, and the nearest one we'd be able to get would be in November. So I'm at a loss, to be quite honest, what kind of opening and who's going to come to it. I called Mr. Justin Munch from the State and Mail. We had a nice little chat. I believe there's going to be an article this week in the State and Mail regarding the dog park.
Okay.
But other than that, it doesn't seem to be a whole lot of people wanting to help out on that. So I'm more than happy to help, assist with that, but I would like some, some help from the community.
What else was there?
Such a response that's wanted.
Chat of a dog costume party? No. Dovetailing with the event on the 28th, is what I'd heard from somebody.
Well, you know, my office door is open all week.
I don't have a dog, and I don't have a lot of costumes, so-
I'd love to have someone come in my door, sir, and tell me that they coordinate that effort, and I'd be more than happy to allow that.
Lacking a dog and good costumes, I don't know or care.
There seems to be a lot of wonderful, wonderful ideas in the community, and yet I have never seen anybody in this particular incident raise their hand and say, "Well, I will take the bull by the horns and coordinate this effort."
Well, we can dress up guys, right, Mr. Mayor?
That's all I have about that.
Well, the, the idea was, was at least floated at, at Parks Board this last month.
And we discussed that, what we'd like to do. No one stepped up and said, "Hey, I'll, I'll organize this," or even assisted. I had Lisa and myself, my assistant, Lisa Meyer, look for, we reached out to county, we reached out to the vets, have no one, no one stepped up to help.
Yeah.
So it's just another effort by the Public Works Department to try to put an open house together. If you would like to help us with that, that'd be wonderful.
Well, yeah, I, I wasn't able to stay for that whole meeting, so didn't, didn't get to hear the whole discussion, other than there were, there weren't any concrete plans at that time. This is three weeks ago.
I've had plans from wine and dog, you know, meet down there, where they have some sort of wine opening, wine event. You know, I've had a lot of great ideas, but I haven't seen one person step up and say-
At least the park is getting used. Thank you for making a beautiful park, and it is getting some use. As the neighbor of the park, it's like, oh my God, there are always dogs in my neighborhood now. My, my trash can is full of poop bags.
I'm happy for that.
Me too, because otherwise it'd be on the table. Well, it does seem to be well-received.
I hope, you know, it'll get Justin Munch, and he puts it in the State and Mail, and hopefully, it will get some response, and there'll be more people that want an open house.
Yeah.
But until such time, and I've got some people to volunteer to help with that, I don't see that coming to fruition.
I have also been asked numerous times if we're going to have an open house, and I also have not received anybody that has said, "Oh, wow, I'd love to do that."
Join me on that.
Everyone says, "Yeah, when, when are we going to do that?" I don't know. What, when are you going to do that?
I've reached out to members of the community, and I haven't received one response saying that they'll take it, and, you know, Lisa and I will assist to a certain part, but we have other duties than to coordinate parties or open house events. I reached out to Justin to try at least get the word out, and I think he'll be doing that.
Okay. Thanks on that one.
My door is always open, though, folks.
I understand.
So if you want to come in and organize it, let me know. Thank you.
Brian, you had a question?
Lance, on the SDCs, what are those typically paid for by the developer?
Well, it depends on the project. Generally speaking, those are for future improvements. There are SDC creditable projects out there. Our master plans generally call those projects out, what kind of projects those are. For instance, it's not going to be for a residential sewer system, or street, or sanitary sewer. For a collective road like Kendall Way, for example, we're looking at widening that. That is in our master plan to be a collector road, so we could use a portion of SDC funds to build that.
What I'm getting at is, I see quite a bit of development, one, two lots here and there, and I don't see that reflected in the report.
I don't understand.
So, for example, there's a house being built on Saniam right now. Would that be reflected in this month? Or how's that SDC paid?
It depends when they got their, when they came in and actually got their building permit from our office, they-
So whatever SDC's at that time. Okay. So it could have been July, it could have been whatever.
It could very well. In fact, the one in Saniam, I think, was earlier on, June, July, somewhere in there.
Lance, are we going to see? I mean, look at Turner. If you drive down to go through Turner and whatever, with Amazon, I mean, I keep anticipating, like you've said many times, a line out your door for single-family dwellings. Are we, are we still going to see that? I mean, interest rates remain low, the economy is booming along, you know, Turner is in sublimity or built out, you know, what's, you know, what can we do?
Well, I, I could speak to that, but this is the planning-
Yeah, okay.
-community development director. I think you need to talk to him, but I would say, planning and development director, I'm sorry. I would say, I would love to see it happen, but you need willing, you know, players in the game that want to come down and develop. Simple as that.
But how can we enhance that, too, Dan? Did you get your SDC question answered? Okay. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fleishman, planning and development?
Great. You've got my written report on August activities in front of you. I don't have anything else to add to that, but I'll answer any questions you might have, and I'll try to answer Counselor Cronquist's question. I, I thought also that we were going to have lines going out the door for building permits. The recording the plat for the Wildlife Meadows subdivision was delayed for a couple of weeks due to just the process of getting through the bureaucracy and getting the plat recorded, and, and I thought that we would have a dozen or so people in within two or three days. And it's now been three months, and I think we've issued six permits. Six, according to sales data, 16 of the 45 lots have been sold and are no longer owned by Mr. Roberts. And people are just taking their time, of those 16 are taking their time submitting applications for permits. That being said, there have been two that have not met the city's standards, and not that they were denied, but the applicants were contacted saying, "Hey, you're missing this, you're missing that." this, you're missing that, and one of them, probably five weeks afterwards, they still haven't come back in with revised plans.
One thing I might add to that also, Roger had told me before this even, this process even started, and as the plat was even being signed, that he really wanted to try to be selective in the people he sold these lots to. He wanted to have it, have a local community feel to it, so I think he's a little bit selective. I don't know, as of this date, he might be getting a little bit more open to selling from outside the community, but that's what he told me before, so that still may be in effect, and he may want a local feel to it.
And the other development, the Hayden Homes development on the west side of the middle school, they're still doing engineering. They submitted plans, the city engineer commented on them, they submitted revised plans, comments have gone back, so they still don't have a product ready to be able to break ground and get those roads and utilities in. I expect that once that is platted, that being a different business model, that they will be in on a regular basis for three or four homes each month, until, you know, for a year until they get it built.
I would agree with that. They're just a different type of developer. They develop and build themselves versus Roger selling individual lots to builders. So they do both.
I ran into something out at East Albany, out near the fairgrounds. See, if a person wanted to see it, Hayden Homes Development, there's one going in out there, that's possible to just drive through it, just pass, pass the fairgrounds on that, on that main road going east, and it's off on the, on the left out there.
And your thoughts?
I hadn't, I didn't, I was coming and going to an event and didn't go, but it's there, and it has, you know, a chance to visit still. Okay, thank you, Dan. Any other questions? And we are close. Jenna, I think you're up.
Mayor and council, you have my report in front of you. It's the report for August, which is a final, final ending of summer reading. I'd like to invite you to our Friends of the Library book sale this week. It starts on Thursday night and goes through Saturday, so.
Should be a good article in the, should be a good article in the paper about it.
Yeah, so it makes a big difference for us, so.
Numbers, patrons, usage is-
Going well.
Going gangbusters?
Going well.
Lining them up at the door?
Depends on when you come to the door, probably, but.
Okay, good enough. Anything else? Any questions for Jenna? Still, we convinced the library board to do their every other year wine and cheese cat killer?
So it's not the library board that does the-
Oh, the foundation.
But the foundation does it, and they are in the process of getting publicity out because we're looking at the 27th of January.
Cool. I mean, it just was a fun event and drew a lot of people in 2015 and-
Looks very fun.
2013, so.
Very cool.
And it raised a lot of money, so that's what they said. Are there any other comments from the public this evening? Anything? Business from the city administrator, Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of quick things. You'd announced at the beginning of the meeting that Counselor Niegel has resigned from the city council, and I just want to take a moment and thank her and for her public service and her service to the community as a city council member, and wish her luck, and she'll be missed. Second thing is, the LOC, League of Oregon Cities Meeting, CIS, the City County Insurance Services, has given the City of State a gold award for safety and spending time for zero lost time injuries for the city for the year of 2016, 2017. So I wanted to take a moment to thank the Safety Committee, which is kind of a group that, that works to help promote safety in our organization and all the, all the staff that made that possible. With that, I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Keith. Business from this chair. Alyssa's tried valiantly to get us to fill out those evaluation forms, so we-
That wasn't to fill them out. We need to approve a new form.
We need to decide a creative form.
Yeah, sorry, I want to make that clear.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Has everyone seen that? What's involved in approving it? Just-
It has to come before the city council for approval.
Put it on the next agenda.
Okay, that's-
Okay. Perhaps we could meet an executive session to review the form before the next meeting? His review is the end of this month, is it, Alyssa?
It's, yes, in October.
Which is now.
Mm-hmm.
His review is the end of October, so we probably should, the five of us, we all should meet to revise the form or approve the revision. Well, we haven't even started-
Or approve it, why don't you submit it to us?
I, yeah, I've sent it out a couple of times over the summer, the revised form or sample forms, plus a couple of other ideas, asking for comments. I heard back from Counselor Clydewell, and I just hadn't gotten any feedback from anyone, so I've not moved forward.
Well, you got mine, but it was dealing with the forms.
Yeah, and so there were a couple things, but typically, when we, if we're going to use this new form, it needs to be adopted, and it's going to be based off the last year. And so that was kind of the concern I shared in my email of, do we move forward with the new form now or use it for next year?
And this is a revision from what we previously used?
It's a completely new form that we did in correlation with doing the whole city staff new performance evaluation. So the process would be either moving forward and doing the review with the old form this year, and then bringing the new one forward to adopt, to put into place for next year. And typically, what we've done is the, I'll send it out to the council, everyone fills it out, submits it back to me, then we have one executive session with the council and with Keith.
What would you folks like to do?
Well, we, we had, had already been through this and decided last year that we were going to use the same form, but we would not be using that form again this year, that it would be revised before we, we did the, the one for the evaluation this year. So that's what she sent out, and that's what I looked at, I thought, was the one that was revised, and now we were just saying whether that one was okay or not. Everyone had a chance to put input into it.
And my feedback to Alyssa was not necessarily the form, but the process. I'd like to sit down with the mayor and council before we went to executive session, so we could all work together to come up with, rather than individual forms, a consensus review, is what my thought was, which was process, not form. Take the form that Alyssa's done so much work with, meet ourselves in executive session because it is a personnel matter, a, you know, work within our own-
Did you look over the form that she sent out?
I did.
And did you have, did you have some changes that you wanted made to it? Is that, was that any-
There are some minor odds and ends, but the process more. Rather than coming in as five different bodies or six different bodies, I'd like to meet ourselves in terms of a process and come in with one set of recommendations from the council and mayor. Anyone else? Because otherwise, we're all going to fill out the form, and we're going to have 20 different ideas for improvement or for, well done, Keith, and-
You're talking about the actual use of the form. We're talking about just the blank form.
I, that's what I'm saying. My question was the whole process rather than the form. The blank form is fine, but before we take the blank form and fill it out, I'd like all of us to get together-
That, that-
And make sense of that before-
That happens.
That's what the process is.
Okay.
Yeah. But the form, speaking back to the form.
The form is, the form is okay. We can adjust the form, but yeah, it's fine. But before we all put six forms onto Keith-
We're not, we're not doing the form right now. We're just saying that the form that we're going to be using is okay.
Okay, and then what are we doing next, Priscilla? What's the next step? We don't give them to Alyssa for amalgamation, do we? That's been the pattern.
Yeah.
But that, but that's not what we're discussing at the moment.
Well, I'd prefer to sit down with you and with Brian and others and-
We're talking, but we're talking about two different things right now.
I understand that, that's what I'm saying. That's my, my preference is for us to sit down and come up with a, rather than have Alyssa go through the forms, send Alyssa a set of council and mayoral thoughts. We boil it down.
And that's what we've always done, right? Gotten together, and we all discuss the question, and we actually-
As long as we amalgamate it somewhere.
We answer those questions.
Six people, but Keith, because I don't like the color of his shirt.
Typically, what happens is, the forms are all submitted to me. I combine everything into one form, and everyone has their individual thoughts, comments, and they're all listed out in the forms, and one form is given out.
Do we review that form before we review Keith's question?
Well, I think, I think I send it out, the completed one.
We actually all got together and discussed it before-
That's what I would prefer.
Yeah, but all in one night.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, that's been the typical, so, so it-
So the city manager won't see the forms until we amalgamate, we send them to you. You amalgamate them, we review them, then we talk to Keith about it, which is great.
Alyssa, your last email said, I'm going to assume everyone is okay with the draft performance review template as written, question mark. So I think, there you go.
Okay, well.
The review question, it's-
Yeah, and so, I mean, it has to come to council for adoption. I think it's by resolution, so if that's what you guys want, I can, I'll put something together for the next meeting.
All right, good enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Business from the council?
How do we go about letting you know if we have, or maybe we don't go about letting you know if we have a preference for somebody that you, you're the person who's going to be making a-
Oh, the council position?
Yeah, the council position. So how do we go about letting you know who we might be interested in?
Send me an email, call me on the phone.
I just tell you sometime?
Stop Gus and I when we're walking by at night.
Okay.
Which we do about every night. Yeah, no, that would, that would be fine, yeah, just, just, I'm in contact. My wife gives me this list of emails every day, saying, read these, this is important. Why? Okay, future agenda items, October 16th, 2017, TMDL report. I'm not sure what that is, but that's all right. And the Mill Creek Park. And is there anything else this evening? I'm going to read her. We're done, thank you. Priscilla? God, I went twice. Thank you for your email that I wanted to-